Gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Glen County Board of Commissioners Thursday, June 2, 2022, regular meeting. As you can see, we're missing a few folks tonight. Commissioner O'Quinn, Chairman O'Quinn is out of town, as is Commissioner Rofolsky. Commissioner Tosterson is joining us via Teams. He's at a continuing ed conference for county commissioners this weekend. If I could ask at this time that you would rise with me, I've asked Commissioner Brunson to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Fendig to lead us in the pledge.
Pray with me. Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for the way that you continue to bless our community in every aspect of it. Lord, we continue to lift up those folks in Uvalde as they are suffering. We pray your hand upon them, as well as those in the Tulsa area that were devastated by the shooting at the hospital. Father, we pray that this country would return to civility, to away from hostility and divisiveness, back to a love for our fellow man. Father, we tonight always pray for our first responders, those in the military that are protecting us each and every day. We thank you for the great county staff we have. We pray tonight for wisdom and discernment in all that we do as we try to serve the our constituents in this community. Pray that everything we do and say would bring honor and glory to you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we'll move to our public comment period. We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Hugh Bork. If you would come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record, please, sir, and you have five minutes.
My name is Hugh Bork. I'm a resident of St. Simons Island. Gentlemen, I'd like to address two issues tonight, if time allows. First question, you've heard this before, are you listening? I don't think so. Your actions don't prove that you are. While my comments tonight are focused on the roundabout at Sea Island and Frederica, comments are applicable to the management of county business in general. The defeat of the SPOST initiative last in the last SPOST can be attributed to a number of reasons. Most of these are debatable, but they include, but not limited to, controversial roundabout, the one in question, poor planning and justifications for the projects on the ballot, perceived an insincere urgency on the part of the newly-elected BOC at the time, and cram it through mentality. That's my term I put on the appearance. Lack of commitment to management of the SPOST projects, past and future, projects that resulted from the continuing good old boys' club mentality, lack of public intent input into the project list. There are very few items that the public commented on that showed up on the SPOST list. In general, lack of trust in the BOC around SPOST items. Despite the defeat of SPOST that included the controversial roundabout, you proceeded to plan with a plan to pursue the roundabout design and construction without any apparent remedy to the objections from the public, more of the just ignore the constituents and ram it through mentality. I refer you to Jim Fresh's letter that was sent to you folks on June 1 yesterday and appeared in the Nextdoor webpage on the webpage today. Where's the logic in the decision that is contrary to the voters' desire, i.e. voted down in the SPOST? Now to be paid for by the taxpayers, okay, versus the purported cost-sharing of the inherent in the SPOST law and the county, aka the taxpayer, funding the cost of the sewer repair solely for the benefit of Sea Island? This just strikes me as taking a giant step backwards. Wow, that really builds trust in the BOC decision-making ability. That's a facetious statement, for the record. And you wonder why some interface with the public is confrontational. Here's a poster child example for that problem. Solicitation of the public input through a questionnaire was a positive step in developing a 2022 SPOST project list. However, your latest decision process regarding the roundabout is an all-shucks moment, negating any positive actions on your part. I think you know the adage of one all-shucks, it raises all of your positive moves. This voter's are not subscribed to the former BOC commissioner's stated notion to the effect that once elected, the BOC is empowered to act on behalf of the county regardless of any related actions. This action is almost a carbon copy of a similarly legal ruling from a Georgia Superior Court overturning Camden County Commission actions around continuing the spaceport development after the voters rejected pursuing any spending any county money on the project if they elected to proceed anyway. It was overturned and the spaceport project was killed, at least at that time. Gentlemen, you don't have the authority to pursue the roundabout based on the events today. Sharing a personal observation, you're blessed with a constituency that is not prone to litigation. It's very expensive, really has to be something out there if we're going to go do that. I suggest you place the roundabout on the ballot in November, either as part of SPOST or standalone item, including funding and resources, and proceed according to the referendum. The proposed design for the roundabout should be published to include as part of the ballot, and the ballot language must include provisions for successful management and timely conclusion of the approved projects, roundabout or others. Pursuing your current path will most likely have a negative implication for SPOST in your remaining terms as commissioners. Just to be clear, I won't support SPOST 2022, not because of the roundabout, but because of the methodology used to ram the roundabout through in a hurry-up fashion, again, cram it through at any cost. Basically, a blank check to destroy a treasure here on the island. It says all the earmarks of a political decision, again, of cramming it through under current BOC term, and let the next BOC deal with the fallout, a seemingly recurring theme of recent times. Changing over to a different subject regarding the zoning ordinance, it is a debacle. I refer you to a continuing list of comments and deficiencies that were listed in the Islander newspaper, and that continues on, including this morning's pieces, that discontinue with an ongoing list of perceived deficiencies. Even that list is halfway correct. Even if it's halfway correct, gentlemen, it's a problem, okay? Should follow the recommendations and have a non-bias committee formed in addition to the committee that you have. The committee that you have noted is part of groupthink, and I would characterize it as a fatally flawed groupthink. You go read the definition of that, you'll get a better understanding of what's going on.
Mr. Bork, your time is up.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Please consider the recommendations.
We have no presentations or announcements tonight, so we'll... Do we have a motion to add a proposed item?
Mr. Chairman, I move to... Vice Chairman, I move to add item 5.1 to the public consent agenda to approve and authorize bike ride across Georgia Bragg to conduct its event on June 11, 2022, as proposed in its letter of request dated May 24, 2022, with the exception that the event will be held at the county's vacant lot located between H Street and I Street and not at the Veterans Memorial Park.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker. I will note, before we take our vote, Chairman O'Quinn has joined us via Teams, but because of his not being able to be here tonight, and he said two previous absences, he will not be voting, although he can make comments tonight. So just so you know what's happening. All in favor, then, by show of hands? And Commissioner Tosterson, by voice?
Yes.
Okay, that carries unanimous to add item 5.1 to the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to add item number 30 to the published agenda to consider approving the professional service agreement with Southeastern Engineering, Inc. for construction documents for Sea Island-Frederica Road intersection improvements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Fendig to add item number 30 to our published agenda for tonight. All in favor, please raise your hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
That is unanimous, so we'll add item number 30.
Mr. Chairman, I move to a motion to approve the consent agenda of general business and finance, and I think that's all on consent agenda, with the exception of any item that a commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any item anyone wishes to pull? And I will speak for Commissioner Tosterson. He has asked me that we pull item number two tonight from the consent agenda. And then we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, with the exception of item two. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
All right, so that is approved. Item number two has been pulled. It states, "Approve the appointments of Christie Jordan and William Dawson to the Board of Governors, to the Brunswick and Glen County Development Authority to fill the expired terms of Christie Jordan and Wayne Johnson. Beginning on the date, they take their oaths after their appointments and ending the later of July 31, 2025, or until their successors are appointed."
Mr. Chairman, I'm a sponsor of those two appointments, and I'd just like to say I think they're both extraordinarily qualified and both have great resumes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tosterson, do you wish to speak to this?
I ask that these items be deferred to the next meeting.
Oh, you ask that they be deferred to the next meeting. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion, or do... Commissioner Brunson, do you want to?
I would move we... I would make a motion that we approve these two appointments.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson to approve these two appointments?
Second.
And have a second by Commissioner Fendig. Then by show of hands, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is three far, and those opposed is myself and by voice, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
Okay. If I could add at this point, it... The questions that Commissioner Tosterson had raised to me has nothing to do with the qualifications whatsoever of these two fine people. He wants to have the opportunity to sit and talk with you, and he had asked that it be pulled so that he would have that opportunity between now and the next meeting. But that vote does carry, vote three to two. No, sir. And I can't see you. Somebody needs to close that blind.
No, sir, it takes four votes to pass an item.
Sir?
It requires four votes to pass an item.
Okay. All right, so procedure, then?
If there's another motion on the floor to defer, otherwise, there's no action taken on that agenda item.
And would it be able to be brought back up at the next meeting?
That's correct.
Commissioner Booker?
I move that we defer this item to the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor now to defer this item to our next meeting. Do I have a second? Then?
I'll go ahead. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to defer until the our next meeting for item number two. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tosterson? Commissioner Tosterson?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to end the motion.
The motion is to defer to the next meeting at this point?
Yes.
Okay, so that carries unanimously to the next meeting. We come now to our public hearing, and we have... Purpose of this public hearing will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments would be limited to relevant information regarding the matter being discussed, and please avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at the time allocated, and your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Item number 26, received citizen comments regarding the proposed Glen County FY 22-23 budget. And Mr. Mayor Munson, you have the floor.
Good evening, commissioners. I have a short presentation tonight on the FY 23 budget. It's pretty much just some pie charts for people that are interested where the money comes from and where it's being spent. So this is a breakdown of our revenue for fiscal year '23. 68% comes from taxes. This 16% that is other sources is use of fund balance. So that was a question I had earlier today, is what is the other sources? That is primarily use of fund balance. Charges for services is 8%, and then the other items fall in under that. A breakdown of where our taxes come from, so of this 68% in revenue, that's what makes up this whole amount, and 52% of that is property taxes, 27% accommodation excise taxes, 12% sales tax, business and occupation tax at 7%, and then real estate transfer taxes at 2%. This is a chart of our proposed county millage rates for fiscal year '23. There is no overall change in the total millage rates, although there have been some changes in the special service districts between capital projects, police, EMS, and fire, Sea Island Police, to get everything to balance out this year. So there are some changes, but the total has not changed. A breakdown of our expenditures in this budget, 38% of the expenditures are on public safety, 24% on general government, 13 on public works, and 7% in judiciary, 9% in housing and development, and so forth. I will note that capital is included in this, so our general government bucket is a lot larger this year than it typically is, and that is from some of the capital projects that have been added into the budget this year have made that number go up. This is a breakdown of our fund types. As you know, we have about 26 funds here in the county. Each fund is its own set of books, so that has to balance with assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. So all of those funds fall into different types, and so our general fund makes up 41% of our total budget. 34% is made up of special revenue funds, and this is where the vast majority of those other funds fall. Capital projects funds, this is just our one capital project fund that is in this number. SPOST is not included in here. And then we have debt service, enterprise funds, enterprise funds, our business-like activities, so that is our building inspection and our solid waste fund. And then finally, our pension fund is 4% of our total budget. This is a breakdown between the types of expenditures that we have, so 48% is personnel, 35% county operations, and 17% capital. I'm not going to go over this in detail, but I put these charts in here for anyone that wants to dig into it a little bit more. I've broken down where the personnel costs come in and how much is spent on public safety, general government, between FY 22 and FY 23, and how those changes fall. As you all remember, we passed a new pay plan in February that went into effect in March, which was about $5.5 million total in salary and benefits across the board. So our total personnel costs have increased 7.8%, just $5.24 million. That is almost entirely made up of that pay plan. We have very, very few new positions. I believe there's two positions that are changing from part-time to full-time that are recommended, and one new position in one of the courts, I believe. So trying to really keep the new positions down to try to save money in those areas. Capital costs, this is a breakdown of our capital, so $25 million in capital spending in the budget this year. That's 17% of our total budget. The vast majority of this increase is made up from the roundabout and the juvenile services center that is included in the budget. The roundabout falls into the general govern... I'm sorry, the juvenile services center falls into the general government category, and the roundabout falls into the public works category. So there's some big changes in here, and that's where you see those changes. Another chart on the breakdown of our capital costs, and it just tells you, you know, what we're spending that money on. So this top number here, this is a juvenile center, roundabout, vehicles, some equipment, hardware, et cetera. And that's all I have for you, and I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, are there any comments before we open our public hearing? This is a public hearing, so any citizen that wishes to speak to the budget may come forward. If you are opposed to the budget, you may come forward first. Anyone that would speak against, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simons. I come before you in my bedroom slippers, because I've been on my feet all day doing heavy labor, and I hope you're prepared tonight to do some heavy labor on the last item on your agenda. But let me talk about the budget. The staff report that you received talks about the great opportunity for increased tourism on St. Simons. And right now, we may have, in the next few days, a lot of tourists coming up from Florida because there is a tropical depression forming out there off the Yucatan Peninsula with tracks that will go across Florida, so we may have a lot of tourists coming up. The problem I have with the budget is there is nothing set aside to help prepare for sea level rise and for the increasing intensity and danger of hurricanes and storm surges. It's just not there. Now, at a special call meeting earlier this week, I believe it was on Tuesday afternoon, you all agreed to spend six, up to $6 million to build a roundabout at Sea Island and Demery Road, up to $6 million. You're not even trying to put it in the SPOST. Maybe you're planning to put the flyover to the tourist causeway on that SPOST. You're in trouble in terms of how you're spending money and planning to spend money. But the serious matter I have been talking to you about, well, not all of you, because some of you are new to this board, but for eight years now, I've been talking about the danger of floods and tropical storms, and you're just not doing anything to prepare other than to order evacuation, mandatory evacuation. And there are a lot of people who just can't evacuate, who won't evacuate. You do not know, because you have not budgeted an item, to find out how many people evacuated for Hurricane Matthew, how many people evacuated for Hurricane Irma, et cetera, why some people did not evacuate, how many people are going to evacuate. You need to put some money in your budget this year. You need to amend your this budget for next year to put some money in for figuring out where people can take refuge in this county if they cannot evacuate in time, if they don't want to evacuate at all, if they're going to risk staying here. So I doubt that you're going to do what I ask, because I am asking. But I want it in the record for some time in the future when there may be some litigation on this matter, some, perhaps some proceedings having to do with criminal negligence, inviting more and more people to come here, to live here. Thank goodness, so many houses on St. Simons are no longer occupied by here. Thank goodness, so many houses on St. Simons are no longer occupied by owners. They are rentals. So that makes it easier. There are not as many people to evacuate, perhaps, as there were five years ago. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition to the budget? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jeff Kilgore. And my opposition stems from verbal representations made directly to me. I have the emails to document Commissioner Fendig and Commissioner Ho Quinn firmly promised that the citizens of Glen County would have an opportunity to weigh in on the roundabout at Sea Island Road and Frederica Road before you got to this point. Now, in the South, we don't call people liars, but when I get a promise, I expect for it to be fulfilled. You have not evaluated the alternatives to the roundabout adequately. On the building for the expansion of the judicial system, we're one of five counties, and I think it's ludicrous, reprehensible, that you would consider building an expansion to provide for courtrooms for all five judges when there's courtrooms and courthouses in the other four counties. I think it's reprehensible that you wouldn't evaluate alternatives to building a new building. There are plenty of vacant spaces in and around this courthouse, and you've evaluated nothing other than, let's go spend the taxpayers' money. Now, if you won't listen to the people, and folks like Hugh Bork, and me, and others, I assure you, in November, we'll meet you at the ballot box.
Hugh Bork, I want to specifically talk about the roundabout budgeting item. I've already hit on a couple of issues I have with why we're moving forward with that. But we moved from a SPOST referendum, where the cost is shared amongst a larger taxpayer group, i.e. the SPOST tax money payers, okay, to where the county is now taking a lot more money, or spending money out of the taxpayer budget. If you look at the breakdown of where our revenues are coming from, most of that comes from, a lot of that comes from property taxes. Gentlemen, that's out of our pocket, my pocket, okay? That's not news to you, but I can't tell you how that really rubs me the wrong way of the irresponsibility of this body to go ahead and go down that path. Yes, I agree, we need some improvement at Sea Island Causeway and Frederica, but a responsible approach and taking the time to get it right rather than cram it in again is not the, is the appropriate way to do it. So I reiterate my recommendation, get it out on SPOST, or have it as a standalone item, put the whole proposal out as part of the referendum proposal, and let the county residents go for it. I agree with Jack. The ballot box, there's three ways, I'm sorry, Jeff, excuse me. I do it all the time. He knows who I'm talking about. Apologize. So at the ballot box, a wise man once told me that there's three ways to deal with government. At the ballot box, okay, at the cartridge box, and at referendums, okay? And I'm not representing, promoting the cartridge box, but gentlemen, you gotta change your way of thinking here instead of cramming it down our throats. This is the poster child for it, as I've already stated. So I am opposed to the budget with that one line item. The rest of it seems to be pretty much in line. Please make that change to the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to the proposed budget? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Anyone that would come forward in favor of the budget? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Monson?
I just wanted to let you all know that this will be adopted with whatever changes that you request on the sixteenth of June. So we're on track for adoption on the sixteenth. And I did just want to make a comment for the record that we do have an EMA budget, and we are working currently on a hazard mitigation plan. There is money in the budget for that, which includes reaching out to a lot of our community partners to make sure that we have things in place to help people get out that need to get out. So that is a line item in the budget, and there is money there for that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Monson. Any discussion, Commissioners?
To Mayor, before you walk away, regardless of people's opinions, I certainly want to verify what I understand the facts, is that our current general fund surplus is not just from property taxes alone. Can you elaborate on the impact of visitor taxes and real estate for short-term rental purchases, and how they've impacted? Thank you.
Yes, we have, as you all know, we passed a short-term rental ordinance in the last year, which has had a significant impact on our accommodation excise tax revenue. So we were collecting around seven to seven and a half percent a year, and we're on track to collect twelve million this year in accommodation excise tax. So some of our excess funds is from that. We also received quite a bit of funding from the federal government for CARES, ARPA, and some other grants that we've worked diligently to get that have helped to offset some of our regular overtime costs for public safety surrounding COVID. We had the, some extra money that came in from a lot of vacancies. As everybody knows, we've really struggled with filling positions, and we've at times been up to a hundred positions short in an eight-hundred-person full-time capacity. That's a lot of vacancies. And some of these departments are going months and months and months without being able to fill them. We were at a meeting today, a leadership meeting for people in Glen County across all different types of businesses, and this is not just a county problem alone. This is an issue all across the county where people are having trouble hiring, and we all know that it's not just this county, it's the state in this country. So a lot of our excess funds have come from vacancies where we just have not spent those funds on those positions. We are still advertising, we're still trying to fill those positions, and we do need those positions. It's put, you know, in many departments, it's put a great hardship on a lot of the people working lots and lots of extra hours. So that is the vast majority of where those funds came from. Also, our rainy day fund came from a settlement many, many years ago with nuclear waste, I believe. And so that is where that thirty million dollars came from, that the commission at the time set aside for hurricanes and disasters. So we don't consider that part of our undesignated fund balance. That's set aside specifically for hurricanes with us being on the coast. So after all of this, our unallocated fund balance in the general fund is around twelve million dollars. And that is the recommendation from the GFOA, is that you have a certain number of days of operating expenditures. So that's about a hundred days of operating expenditures for last year's budget. It'll go up a little bit this year because of the pay plan changes, but they recommend that we keep a hundred days of operating expenses in undesignated fund balance.
Thank you. Ms. Monson, when we look at your graph, revenue types, sixty-eight percent of our revenue comes from taxes. Is that not correct? And of those taxes, the tax types, you went and explained in the next graph, I believe, that the property taxes make up fifty-two percent of the sixty-eight percent, which translates to about thirty-four percent of our tax revenues come from property taxes, just so you would understand that. Also, can you show us how much revenue we collect from surrounding counties for our judicial system? That was on our.
So I don't have that prepared tonight, but I will, I will say that Mr. Kilgore is correct. There are five courthouses in our judicial circuit, and each one of those courthouses handles their own cases. So any expansion in addition to the Glen County courthouse is for Glen County cases, Glen County juvenile system. It's not for the other four districts. They all have their own courthouse facilities, their own budgets. They pay their own people in those, in those areas.
And we receive funds, revenues, to support the DA's office and other items.
We do. So the DA, so the DA's office is a little different. Each entity has to make an allocation to them, and then they manage their own. But we do get funding from the other four districts into our Brunswick Judicial Circuit Fund. One of those special revenue funds in there is the Brunswick Judicial Circuit, and each circuit is required to contribute a certain amount each, each month towards the expenses of the circuit, the overall expenses. And so we bill those. Glen County just happens to be the fiscal agent because we're the largest county. They, they have entrusted us to handle all the finances for that, but we do bill those other counties monthly for, for the Brunswick Judicial Circuit.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Bronson? All right, and we will vote on our budget at our June sixteenth meeting. All right. Next, we have a public hearing for land use, item number twenty-seven ZV five zero seven two, the Dollar Tree sign variance. We have a request for a variance to sign regulations outlined in the Retreat Village Shopping Center Plan Development District PD. That is GC dash two zero zero three dash three seven for the property located at two oh two Retreat Village, St. Simons Island, parcel number zero four dash zero two one seven nine. The applicant, Dollar Tree, is requesting a variance to allow for a two hundred and twelve point zero three square foot wall sign on the building, which is greater than the maximum of twenty-four square feet allowed in the PD. Megan Jackson, Anchor Sign Inc., agent for WFC Orchard Retreat LLC and WFC Cortine Retreat LLC. Ms. Thompson?
Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is a sign variance. The Dollar Tree is coming into two oh two Retreat Village, and they are requesting that you waive the requirement for their size, the size of their sign, so that they can install a larger sign. They're proposing a two hundred and twelve point zero three square foot internally lit LED sign. The existing space was formerly the Bonefish Grill Restaurant. The new tenant plans to remodel the interior of the space for the Dollar Tree. The planned development text for this property allows the two primary tenants to have up to two hundred and fifty square foot of signage. All other tenants are allowed up to twenty-four square foot of signage. The Win Dixie and the H&amp;H Lifestyles are the two anchor tenants, so they are the ones allowed the two hundred and fifty square foot of signage. And as you can see, neither of those signs are actually as large as they can be. Win Dixie's is over two hundred, H&amp;H has over a hundred and sixty square foot.
Ms. Thompson, how big was the Bonefish sign? Do you know?
They didn't come in for a variance, so it should have been twenty-four square foot.
We'll go with that. Thank you.
Again, the request is for two hundred and twelve point zero three square foot. That's not in compliance with the sign regulations. Here's the standards of evaluating if this variance is needed, and this is what you'll consider. Are there any extraordinary or exceptional conditions on the property? Are the conditions particular to that property? And the answer to that is no. Every non-anchor tenant has the twenty-four square foot sign limit in that development. Are there any special conditions that do not result from the applicant? No, the applicant hopefully was aware of the limitations when they leased that space. This is the proposed sign. This is the previous signage. These are the two primary tenant signage. These are your possible actions, and staff recommends denial of the sign variance and has put a possible motion for your use. That's the end of the staff report. I'm available if you have any questions. Is the agent for the applicant in the room tonight? Okay, so the agent is here to make their case.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, did they say why they needed such a much larger sign?
Visibility for the business.
Okay. No other reason?
No, sir.
Commissioners, any other comments? If you wanted to come up and address the boards, you can at this time if you'd like before we open the public hearing.
Good evening, members of committee?
State your name and.
Absolutely. Obviously, not Megan Jackson, but Jim Herney with Anchor Sign. I live in Charleston, South Carolina. Typically, when I get to come across the country and do variances for any one of our clients, I always say, I live in beautiful Charleston, South Carolina compared to Ohio or any of those other locations, but I can't really do that here because it's absolutely stunning in this community. It's a nice drive over, so I appreciate you having me. And before I start, just to the members present, to the commissioners, a little on my background, I spent sixteen years in the District of Columbia. I worked for three Republican U.S. senators, all from the South. And I have to say, I always thought, and this is when I was much younger, that that was the most important job in the world. But I have come to realize, as I've grown a little older, that your job is far more important, and also, by the way, far more stressful. And I can tell you that I have absolutely no issue at all with the budget or roundabouts, and I want to say that I can only imagine the difficulty it is to be at the local level. You run into folks at the grocery store, you run into folks at church, they, it's a hard, it's the hardest job to have. So those who are in the United States Senate, it's not quite as difficult. But that is neither here nor there. I do want to take just a little note on the staff. This is not just about the look of the building or the signage. And there is a safety concern, but I can appreciate the staff's comments that it was only about the building. It's not. We, Dollar Tree wants to be a good tenant, wants to be a good neighbor. We believe that the size of the sign, and I will tell you, this two hundred and twelve, I think, while the option is maximized at two hundred and twelve, I don't think that's a good size. I think it can be smaller. I don't think twenty-four square feet works. Obviously, the Bonefish Grill, I would say, the commissioner's is out of business. And I'm going to guess it's because, I'm just going to assume it's because of the twenty-four foot signage. Just going to guess. Maybe not the case, but that could very well be why they're out of business. Now, Dollar Tree is an amazing company. They do work for all walks of life. They sell just about everything, no longer always just for a dollar thanks to inflation, but they employ, they pay taxes. They're a good tenant to have. They'll be a longtime tenant. And I can say that as a company, we've done signage for them for almost eighteen years. They continue to grow, they continue to be good stewards of the economy in the area, and they're going to be an amazing neighbor and a partner in this community, both from a charitable standpoint, as an employer. They'll be a good actor for the community. Now, the sign code is well-written, it's actually very thoughtful. You know, I can not be critical at all. The issue for Dollar Tree, and again, it's not just about building signage so people can see it better. It's the idea that Dollar, that Dollar Tree, which is going to ask, is requesting for two hundred and twelve square feet on that front elevation, I'm not sure that's the right size. I think there's a smaller version of that. But, you know, Win Dixie has over two hundred square feet of signage, understood. They've got forty-seven thousand square feet of store presence. The H&amp;H store has over a hundred and sixty square feet of signage, and they have eighty-four fifty in square feet, whereas Dollar Tree, when they enter into this property, remember, we said, we were, just mentioned that we were not the anchor client, Dollar Tree will have the second-largest square footage in that plaza at ten thousand five hundred and ninety-two square feet. So larger than the other anchor tenant, which is H&amp;H Lifestyle. So I, I don't know the way we determine who's the anchor tenant. So I, I don't know the way we determine who's the anchor tenant. Is it, who's there first? Is it in leasing documents? That was a question we had with Dollar Tree. We talked about, did we understand the sign code as we came in? Sure, we understood it, but wondering how a larger square-footed store can no longer, can't be considered as a primary tenant. They're larger, they're a national presence, they're going to draw folks to that community. And then I'll say, if I may, just walking through this process of safety, I do think safety is an important issue. That Frederica Boulevard, it's 30 miles per hour, two lanes, and 24 inches, 24 square feet, and I've got, I did not have this submitted, I should have submitted this earlier, I've actually got it, what it looks like. I don't know if you want to put the, can we put the 212 back up real quick? Is that, is that okay? Because I'm embarrassed at how big that is, so let me just show you how embarrassed I am going to be about the 24, but let me, I think it's such a good point. So that is 212, we said? I don't know if you can see this, and I'm happy to hand this over. This is 22 square feet. It's a little smaller, and I'm happy to hand this over. What we've done is we've done a stacked version, we've done a stacked version with the dial on the top, I've done a linear version. If you want, you want to see what that 24 looks like, it's, I'm happy to share that. I should have submitted that earlier, I apologize. What I would offer to the members of, to the members present is, in this case, the code is very specific. Two anchor tenants, staff has indicated who those anchor tenants are. A new tenant comes in who's larger, both by national presence, which is, I don't think is a, is a good argument, but by size, square footage of size of the, of the location. Is there room under a variance to move up from that 24 square feet? 212, I think, is a maximum size, it's too big. Obviously, you can see it right there, it's too big. I don't think the dial on top is necessary. I think you can reduce that square footage. But I'm wondering if, as we discuss this variance, if there's an opportunity, and again, from a safety standpoint, as you're traveling down that road, to be able to see the Dollar Tree sooner. We don't need to draw people once they're in the parking lot. I think being able to get folks on the roadway would be important for us. And so is there an opportunity to come down from that 212, but above that 24? And is this, and I offer this to the members, I, I'm curious, have you come through this before? Where you've got what's considered, I guess, staff is saying, these are the anchor tenants. I, I don't know how that's determined, but a larger, one of, a new store comes in that's larger, how, how do you deal with that kind of signage? Is there an opportunity to change the dynamics? I just don't know that. I'm just curious to the process. So that's my approach, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any, anything before we go to the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing, so any that wishes to speak in opposition to this Dollar Tree sign variance, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
You, Board Commissioner Brunson, just for the record, I'm making myself known tonight just for the absence I've had here, so. I just got to ask a question. If the ordinance is clear on who the anchor tenants are, why is that part of the discussion? Okay? In my opinion, the arguments that we've seen here, both in the staff report and the gentleman that just made, are almost irrelevant to signage sign. Let me give you just a couple of examples, it struck me, just listen to this. Safety issue, large signs on box stores by busy highways probably have some merit. That's not where we are, right? I think you'll agree that the pace of life here is somewhat slower. Shopping center is there, once Dollar Tree is established, and I'm not making any aspersion on Dollar Tree as a company, do business with them all the time, okay? Not going to argue the issue of their right to be here on the island, although I'll draw his attention to the grief that Dollar General went through several years back, and they ended up not getting approved for their variance to go in at a different location. Completely different circumstances, but just to give you an idea of the, of the local residents' view of this type of establishment. We're not here debating that, but that's the background to say, why do we want to make, why would we want to grant a variance to a company that has really not established a basis for that variance? It's not a safety issue. I'm sure they'll have signage out front, that the local signage that everybody else has, all the other stores have posted either on Frederick or Demery, that identify the stores that are in there in addition to whatever's on the stores, storefronts, right? So I would think to keep, we, we talk about the term of death by a thousand cuts of changing our quality of life here. Is this by itself going to change our quality of life? Obviously not. But why would we want to grant a variance, okay? He can hang around till the variance, the ordinances, the new ordinance is signed off and see if it changes there. But guys, there's no basis in this argument right now as to why we should even consider granting it. I agree with the staff's decision to not recommend denial of this, this variance request. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition to Dollar Tree sign variance?
Jeff Kilgore. And probably 50% of the times that I've appeared before you, I've asked that you follow your I think the majority of the time, you are inclined to grant variances. I oftentimes have argued unsuccessfully that you follow your own law. I also am aware that the Island Planning Commission routinely approves any variance, special use, conditional use, anything that comes before them, they, variance on buffers, doesn't matter, to the point that I call them now an approval commission. I'd like not to call you the Board of Commissioners Approval Commission. I think you have an ordinance, you have a staff recommendation. I recommend you follow the recommendation. In my earlier comments, I was remiss, I meant to commend Commissioners Neal and Brunson. On Tuesday, there was considerable discussion to vote to approve the $205,000 contract for SEI, and you didn't even have a contract. Now, that's the most absurd discussion I've ever seen with commissioners, inclined, several of them, to vote to approve something they'd never even read. That's not the way to conduct the people's business. And, and I want to thank Commissioner Brunson and Commissioner Neal, I apologize, I didn't do it earlier. Thank you very much.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to the Dollar Tree sign variance? Seeing none, hearing none, any, which, who wishes to speak in favor of? Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the Dollar Tree sign variance? I got it out that time. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we'll turn it back over to you. Any questions, any motions?
Mr. Vice Chairman, for the record, and I checked with counsel, I have no ownership of H&amp;H Lifestyles. That is my son's business, and I have no ownership, and counsel says I have no conflict of interest.
Thank you. All right. If there's no discussion, can I hear a motion?
If there's no discussion, can I hear a motion?
Can I hear myself?
Can I hear myself?
I think that's a first for me, so.
Want to welcome Dollar General as investor into our community. It's Dollar Tree, excuse me. And, but I think that you have a good argument on signage versus square footage. But I think at this time, it is incumbent to keep the restriction as it is, and I would make a move to deny ZV 5072. Get settled in, let the community get familiar with you, and then see where it goes. You can always come back at a later date.
Commissioners, we have a motion to deny ZV 5072. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Fendig, second by Commissioner Booker, all in favor of the motion to deny ZV 5072. Please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, so that is unanimous for ZM 5072. Moving to item 28, ZM 4993, King City Subdivision Plan Development District, request for approval of a rezon of approximately six acres located at 101 Goode Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel number 04-04864 and 04-15119 from Forest Agricultural, One Family Residential, and Plan Development District, ZM-006-021. This is three separate zonings on one parcel as it's presently zoned to a newly created planned development district. The proposed use is one family residential with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for the estate of Robert M. Torres, applicant, and Robert Miller, Torres and Atlantic Southeast Enterprises Inc.'s owners. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is a request to rezone from three separate districts to a single planned development text. It currently houses a single-family dwelling, and the proposal is single-family with a minimum of 200, oh, sorry, 20,000 square foot lots. This is the zoning map of the area. This proposal is to create those 20,000 square foot lots, no minimum lot width, and the only use a single-family residential. Just to note that other residential districts similar to this do have a lot width requirement of 100 foot. This proposal before you does not include that. This is the proposed PD text. You did receive this in your agenda packet. This is the proposed master plan. On May 17th, the Island's Planning Commission held a duly notice public hearing and unanimously six to zero voted to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of ZM 4993 with the following conditions. Did you vote on that? Okay, so that's incorrect, it's a typo. It was five to zero. Planning Commissioner Torres recused himself with the following conditions, minimum of a 60-foot lot width, and the lots will be based on the development area of the lot versus any undevelopable area. Here are your possible actions, and if you agree with the recommendation from the Island's Planning Commission, there's your possible motion. That's the end of the staff report. I'm available if you have any questions. Brian Hunt, agent for the owner, is available, and so is Mr. Torres.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Commissioners, or is there anything that you would like to inquire into before we start the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, so...
I'm sorry, I, I probably didn't speak clearly. The agent's here to make his case before the public hearings.
All right, I will do that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and we ask that you approve this as presented with the motions, the 60-foot, we're perfectly good with, as well as the lots being based on the development area.
All right, thank you. Have you done any kind of site plan for this? I, I couldn't make it out on the screen.
So roughly, behind the scenes, yes, we've kind of looked at it. I think there's roughly six, eight lots that we might be able to get out of this total, total area. I think that it's, it gets, 20,000 square foot lots are a lot of lots. I think there was a, there was a slide that did come up in the presentation that shows all the zoning all the way along the beach. Most of it is R6 and RR. There is very, there's, I don't think there's any that's 20,000 square foot that's even along the beach area. So I think it would, would have been well within our right to ask for an R6 or a RR style zoning, but I think Mr. Torres was very clear that they wanted these to be very large lots and keep the character of that existing area.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Oh, Mr. Torres?
Yeah, Pamela, can you show that, that previous slide that Mr. Hunter burned through with the beachfront lot? I just want to point out, I put this together. This is every beachfront property on St. Simon's Island that's residentially zoned. You've got R6, 6,000 square feet, VR, 6,000 square foot minimum, RR, 6,000 square foot minimum, RR, R6, and then one R9 up there on East Beach. So, you know, I think we could have asked for R6, R9 with 9,000 square foot lots, but we didn't really feel like that was the character of St. Simon's. We wanted estate-sized lots. And so this is a six-acre parcel, we're asking for 20,000 square foot lots. The reason why we didn't put a minimum in there originally was because we're not exactly sure how the road's going to lay out in there, and the, I'm not sure if you can really tell from this, but the property has got a very odd-shaped corner that gets very narrow and get a road to it and try to access the lots from the road, gets tricky. The codes say you can only have flag lots on 10% of the lots, and if there's only six lots, then you can't have any flag lots at all. So it just made it difficult, but we did concede with the, or, yeah, concede with the Planning Commission that we would agree to a 65, 50, 60, 60-foot minimum lot width requirement, and that we would, the lots would be comprised of all upland development and no marsh included, which I don't think is in the code either.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, anything before the public hearing? If not, anyone that would come forward to speak against ZM 4993, please come forward and state your name for the record. Anyone that would speak against ZM 4993? Seeing none, hearing none, any that would speak in favor? Come forward and state your name, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joey Stringt with Hunter McLean, I'm here on behalf of Sea Island Company, which owns adjacent land to the property that's being considered. The Torres family and representatives of Sea Island have been in discussions concerning this project and have agreed to a, really a golf course protection zone that would be applicable to a part of the property, and that would be included in the covenants for the subdivision when it's developed. And, and on behalf of Sea Island Company, would appreciate, express the appreciation of the Torres family for considering those requests, and I'm here to state their support for the application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stringt. Anyone else that would speak in favor?
Jeff Kilgore and I hope, Michael, that my presence doesn't detract from your presentation and your chances for approval. I can't express it any more positively than to say that for all the many things that Bob Torres did for this community, that you grant this summarily and as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in favor of ZM 4993?
I'm Julian Smith again. At the IPC meeting, I facetiously spoke against in opposition, and I did that as a way of making it very easy for the IPC to approve. I started by reminding the IPC that in 2024, we will celebrate the centennial of the opening of the Torres Causeway. And the Torres Causeway made it possible for ordinary people to drive in their flippers, their Model Ts, their new Model As, onto St. their Model Ts, their new Model As, onto St. Simons. Many of the, most of the coastal islands were accessible only by boat, and we have the example, of course, of Jekyll Island, which was a playground for the rich, for people who arrived in yachts. I proposed at the IPC, in opposition to what was planned by the Torres family, that would be much, much better to celebrate the centennial, now I was being facetious, by rezoning this for perhaps a trailer park, or an RV park, or a budget motel in the spirit of the opening of St. Simons to people coming in their cars. Partly, I was speaking out of nostalgia based on my first visit to St. Simons in 1946, when my dad came to visit one of his Navy buddies right after the war. And this was a very funky, St. Simons was a very funky, shabby, beachfront community. It was wonderful. I wish we still had all of those little cottages along the beach. I think there's probably only one small cottage left. So what the Torres family is proposing here is reasonable. It is appropriate to be next to the Sea Island Golf Course, et cetera, et cetera. So, yes, of course, you're going to approve this. So, thank you, and good night. Well, no, I'll stick around for your next item.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Mr. Bork?
Hugh Bork, I am in favor of this. I just would offer one comment. Apparently, the Sea Island representative talked about some type of protective feature that the two parties had come to an agreement on. You may want to consider that as making that a condition of approval. It's basically a gentleman's handshake right now. If that's part of it, you may want to consider it as an additional addendum, just a comment for consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come forward to speak in favor? State your name, please, sir.
My name is Tim McDermott on St. Simons Island. I just want to make a general comment for those folks who aren't able to attend these meetings. This is the second item that the stuff that's being presented to you at the meeting is not on the website for the folks who aren't here. This map is not on here. The budget presentation that Ms. Munson gave was not the same as what's on the website. So I'd just like to, and many times, there are no presentations attached to it, and I send emails in and say, can we please get the attachments on the meeting agenda for the future, so people can look back at the meeting and understand what happened rather than for those who couldn't attend at the time. So it's not really about this item, but it's about this item and the other item and just going forward.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else that would speak in favor of ZM 4993? In case we forgot your name, would you state it again for the record?
Michael Boras, St. Simons Island. I just want to respond to Mr. Boras' comment about the conditions on the zoning. We tried to do that first. We put it in the zoning text. Staff told us to take it out and do it in a side agreement because staff didn't want the responsibility of enforcing all of the different conditions. So we do have a signed agreement with Sea Island that stipulates all of these different stipulations.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Commissioners, if I could, please respond to the one comment that you all received. When the agenda is put up on the website for the public to view, it's actually linked to the staff report, which is the more detailed information that is provided to you prior to the meeting. Staff then takes that and provides a short summary to show you because you've already seen the information, and those are not typically made available. So the more thorough staff report is available to the public.
Pam, what is the height restriction for this request?
Gentlemen, can we entertain a motion?
Got the motion up there to approve ZM 4993 with the following conditions: minimum of 60-foot lot width, lots will be based on the development area.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Brunson. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. ZM 4993 passes. Under General Business, item number 29, consider approving the envisioned Glen zoning ordinance review process as proposed by the zoning review group. And we're talking about the process, not the ordinance tonight. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you know, at your last meeting, you appointed this zoning ordinance review group to look at and provide the planning commissions and you ultimately with a recommendation for zoning ordinances, and you directed them at their first meeting to prepare a more detailed plan for how they would solicit public input and go about the review process. The review group met May 23rd to accomplish the task. The proposed process was sent to you in an agenda. I do not have slides for it. The zoning review group, if you approve this, would like to have their first meeting next Monday, June 6th. That meeting would cover the design standards, Article 3, Sections 1 through 5. The proposed process is to meet every Monday from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., excluding the week of July 4th. The meeting topics will be provided in the meeting notices. Meetings will end at 6:00 p.m. unless extended by a vote of the zoning review group. The goal is to end the meetings by the end of August, but they think they might need more time. Any action for a recommendation requires five affirmative votes of the nine-member group. The ZRG meetings will be approached by article. The zoning review group, staff, and invited experts will discuss the agenda items, what it means, how it would be interpreted or applied, et cetera. They would then open public comment time, three minutes per speaker, 30 minutes total. Sign up before the start of the meeting. The chair of the review group may extend beyond 30 minutes if there are a large number of speakers. They also will encourage follow-up with written comments for record-keeping. Once they've listened to the public comment, they will return the item back to the zoning review group for discussion and concept-level decision on action to recommend on that section. Staff and the consultants will then incorporate those changes into the document for their final review and vote at the following meeting. The goal is to have that language back to them the following week. If it's extensive changes, it may take two weeks. They also propose to hold three public town halls that would be an answer-question style, one per month that would be covered, the articles that they propose to cover in their weekly meetings that month. Those would start at 6:00 p.m. to be more flexible for more attendance. They also will encourage written comments to the zoning update at glencounty-ga.gov email address, and county staff will create a process of distributing those emails to the zoning review group so that they see them prior to their meetings. County staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners review the proposed process, edit as you see fit, and approve the process for the zoning review group to begin the actual review of the envisioned Glen zoning ordinance. If that's your desire, there's a possible motion for you on the memo in the packet. And I am available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Well, Mr. Vice Chair, I, again, voiced my opposition to the makeup of this committee in the way it was chosen. I don't think it's representative of everyone, and even the requirements that were set forth didn't allow for folk who wanted to participate on this committee to feel like they could. So I don't think it's, I can't support it.
Commissioners?
Pam, how many members of the planning commissioner own this committee, just for the record?
Three members of the mainland planning commission, three members of the island planning commission, two citizens, one from the mainland, one from the island, and Commissioner Rafalsky.
Okay. And the planning commissions are appointed by the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
I think the message here is that we're staying with inside the system of protocols and participants that have longstanding by appointment of this commission to work through this process. They asked at their request to have a couple additional people that they wanted. I'm very confident that this process will work its way through. There's been a lot of negative about it or disclusion. Invision Glen, will you describe just briefly the narrative of how that put together and the large amount of stakeholders that participated in the original form of that? Will you just give us a quick narrative?
Yes, sir. The envisioned Glen comprehensive plan was adopted in October of 2018, and it said as a project priority was to do a, prepare a comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. The Board of Commissioners in January 2019 contracted with TSW to prepare that comprehensive update. The board at the time wanted to make sure there was a lot of public input. They extended the time for public input so that they could hear from citizens, hopefully across the county. There were over 14 public input sessions, meetings, surveys online, events out in the community over 2019 and 2020. Those, of course, efforts went virtual after the pandemic started. Then, in October of 2021, the board authorized TSW to prepare draft zoning based on the planning concepts that had been worked out through those public input sessions. So that document was available in January of this year, and since that time, it's been made available to the public, and we've been, you all have been working with the zoning review group to hammer out the details of what that review process is going to look like.
So we are not at a process where the public has been excluded or unaware of, it's had a large amount of stakeholder participation, surveys, and public hearings to where we are now. What happened was with COVID, it sort of sat on the shelf, and with the new commission, the commission decided to bring it off the shelf and move it forward.
Yes.
And anything that's done through the zoning goes through the planning commissions. Those bodies are planning commissions. So we're not deviating the process and pathway that is normally used. So I just want to say that nobody is being discluded from the beginning of this. It's going through a process. It's going to take some time. It's doing in the format of how the planning commissions normally do that, and their final recommendations will ultimately come to this commission as it's normally done for approval, whatever time that takes. And I want to thank all of the participants for the extra amount of unpaid time they basically are putting in to push this project through. So, thank you.
Ms. Thompson, if the criteria is that this committee is going to meet on Monday, for folk who cannot meet on Monday, are they able to participate?
No, sir. The discussion...
Thank you, that's good.
Oh, okay.
Commissioners, any other discussion on this item? Then, is there a motion?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the envisioned Glen zoning ordinance review process as proposed by the zoning review group.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Brunson. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
All right, that's for far. Those against, Commissioner Booker. So that is a four-one vote to approve item number 29.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Pam. And again, thank you for those that will be taking their Mondays to do that. Thank you.
Item number 30 that we added to our published agenda is to consider approving the professional service agreement with Southeastern Engineering, for the construction documents for Sea Island-Fredrica Road intersection improvements. Mr. Austin?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dave Austin, not Scott Jordan. And my intent is to go quickly over his slide presentation that you all have seen on Tuesday and to answer any questions I have. Scott Jordan may be backing me up on the phone. I don't know, he might have gotten lost at the Dollar Tree. So this is the same presentation, give you a quick idea, and you all recall Southeast Engineering, same firm that designed the roundabout at Kingsway and Frederica. Okay, so let me see if I can get this going here. Okay, so project history, they were already doing some work for GDOT down on Dunbar Creek Bridge, and they extended their surveyers a little far forward there in March of 2021 to do some work. And then we looked at some concepts back in June of 2021, and a report, and we have a report that it will be stamped and sealed. And then you awarded a survey, did things a little differently this time. Normally, we call 811, and they survey all the utilities, but we've had some challenges with that. So in this case, we, they recommended, and based on a couple of construction projects we've recently had, good idea, have a private firm come in and locate the utilities. Okay, and then, so there's the BOC presentations. You guys have come to know Scott and his team here. And then we have, so we looked at the two signalized intercept concept, and we looked at the roundabout concept, and we studied, this is not new, it's been studied multiple times by many different engineering firms. And so, you know, as you know, we not only do an intersection improvement for today, but we mainly do an intersection improvement for tomorrow. And you can see down here, the 2041 level of service that we're looking at. And for some reasons that I can't explain, okay, but a good traffic engineer can, the levels of service are measured differently for signalized intersections as they are for roundabout intersections. So if you just, you don't really need to keep your eyes there, because I've copied it on a piece of paper, and I'll tell you, but this is what we're looking at, 2014 level of service. This is where we're going to be, okay? Now, just going back, you can argue, and it was argued on all three roundabouts that we constructed during 2016, that the traffic counts weren't taken at the right time of year. But the bottom line is, the traffic counts can be taken, and whether it's 1,000 cars that pass through the intersection, or 1,500 cars that pass through the intersection, there, you get a certain level of service. And we all know, I believe we all know, that this intersection is a challenge and needs some work. The lights have been timed. We've done that. This is the roundabout concept. Okay, so the level of service that we're looking at is 2041 right here. And so if you went back to the previous one, the level of service that we'd be looking at for a signalized intersection at AM peak is 37 seconds. This means how long you stay at the intersection. So 2041, we're looking at a level of service of 15 seconds. And the level of service in 2041 for the signalized intersection, 54 seconds. And the level of service in 2041 for the signalized intersection, 54 seconds, and this has it at 35 seconds. Now, we heard, I believe the commission loud and clear on Tuesday, that we not only want to look at, we're not only studying the intersection and designing the intersection, but we want to look up Frederica Road, and we want to look to the west, to make sure that this area flows, and we also want to evaluate the Harris Teeter light. I think Scott mentioned that, you know, once you put the roundabout in, the lights will, can be timed differently, but there may be an option to do something else with this light down here. So, cost estimates, okay? I don't, I don't think anybody believed, or based on current construction volatility, the 2.8 million is what he currently thinks the roundabout's going to cost, but we're having a hard time getting folks to bid on construction projects. And there's a problem with both supplies of construction materials and personnel to do this work. So you graciously gave us a little bit bigger budget so that we have some room to maneuver. But this is what the current estimate would be just for the roundabout, okay? So we all know there's going to be some right-of-way costs, okay? Particularly on the one side by the Harris Teeter. And you can't do that until you figure out how much right-of-way you're talking about. There's some Georgia Power transmission lines that we're in talks with Georgia Power about that may or may not have to be moved. This one, kind of like Dimory Road, there is a web of joint water and sewer. All the sewage from South Island and all the sewage from Sea Island passes through this intersection. And if you, if you actually, if you actually are stuck here on a nice summer day, waiting for the light, sometimes you get reminded about that. And so, like we did at Dimory and East Beach, we've coordinated with Joint Water and Sewer, and they have a plan fixed for that. We hope to fix that during the construction. And then, South, Sea Island will be a big player in this, as they were a big player in the roundabout at Kingsway and Frederica. And we're identifying live oaks, but we'll look at live oaks, landscaping, lighting, both landscaping in the roundabout, landscaping in the Twitty Park area, and that to make it sure that it all looks very nice. And this is the, doing a couple of things differently here. Okay? One thing we're doing differently here is a peer review. Didn't do that on the three roundabouts we built before. And I'm not quite sure how that works, but it's going to be interesting to see how it works. But that means that we're going to, as we go through the design, we're going to send that design to another outfit, another designer, engineer firm, and they're going to give us some comments and some reviews. And so, and this is the cost of the other cost, and this is the total cost down here for the design. This design, pretty close, depending on what the cost of the roundabout is, about the same percentage that we paid for the other roundabouts. And this shows you Kingsway and Frederica, and we hope to raise the bar on this new roundabout and have it look even better than this one. And so, that concludes my presentation, subject to your questions.
Mr. Austin, what is, you know what the annualized cost of operating a signalized intersection of that magnitude is?
Well, you know, with LED lighting, you know, the lights themselves, we're not, we don't actually pay that much. I don't think I get, I used to get individual bills across my desk, but I don't think I get those individual bills anymore. So the actual lighting is not that substantial. But, you know, we do have to go out and restring these things and redo these light intersections. We are currently, we have a current glitch in the one at Redford Village, and we're going to have to restring that one and fix that. So with intersections, with signalized intersections, not only do you get the occasional rebuild, you get the occasional people running through the computer box on the side of the road, which costs you $10,000 to $12,000 to replace. You get folks, when they did Lanier Plaza, cutting your lines in there to, for your sensors. So there's just a constant maintenance that you pick up on signalized intersections, and that's why I have a team of five technicians that work the signalized intersections around the county.
Had a few problems during Hurricane Irma with our traffic lights. Like, all of them were gone.
It is, as you remember, it is a harrowing experience going down the spur with no signals.
Yes. Also, I think one of the things that gets lost in the conversation is the safety aspect. I don't know that there are too many T-bones in a roundabout, and-
So, you know, we'll, obviously, a two-lane is a little more challenging than a one-lane as far as navigating. You get folks from out of town that waver into both lanes, you know, and provide some challenges when you're going through a roundabout. But you don't have the, yes, sir, you don't have the, you miss the T-boning thing. And there's a, you know, I think you've all seen that, there's a collision aspect of how many collision points that a signalized intersection or T-intersection has versus a roundabout, and I think a roundabout's half of them. So there's, there's a, there's a safety aspect, there's an energy efficiency aspect, you don't have cars sitting there idling, and then there's a level of service. More importantly, there's a level of service thing. So, you know, just like joint water and sewer, when they're doing pipes, you know, our roads are kind of like pipes, you know? You can make the pipe bigger, you can four or three-lane the road, or you can make the joint bigger or the pump station bigger, so that when the, when the cars get to that intersection, they can move quicker through the intersection. So the first, the first step in these things is to look at the intersection and try to get people through the intersection a little faster. And people will always say, well, you need to do a comprehensive study, okay? And so I've been in this business, I guess 15 years in the traffic business, and I've seen some comprehensive studies, but they're not comprehensively executed, okay? They may have a comprehensive study, but they don't have enough money to execute them all at the same time. So just like playing with water as a little kid, when you fix one traffic intersection, sometimes your problem or your challenge moves down the road to another intersection. So that's kind of what happens on this.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Sure.
Commissioners.
Thank you, Dave. You know, there's a lot of visceral going back and forth about this project. And so, a couple of things that are always being said that I want to take the opportunity continuously to negate. One of those, Mr. Attorney, I always call on you on a regular basis. There is a perception that Twitty Park cannot be built on, cannot be intruded on, or used for anything else but park. Will you elaborate on what your correct legal interpretation is based on a lawsuit that was filed?
Certainly, Commissioner. The 1924 deed into the county for that park said that was, or for the property said it was to be used for a park and for right-of-way access purposes to Sea Island. So it's both. It's park use and right-of-way use. And the course order in 2019 affirmed that, and said that it's for both uses. So it's not one or the other, it's both.
For dual uses. And is Glen County the sole owner of Twitting Park?
Yes.
Another thing is, I like to take an opportunity to debunk the continuous slight towards Sea Island and accommodating their sewer. The, Dave, if you'll go back to that picture there. Want you to understand, yeah, the, no, the sewer pipe manhole you had right there, the picture, right there. Everybody's driven through that intersection, has smelt that smell. And that project's been waiting to be done by joint water sewer. It's not being done for Sea Island. It's done because it's an antiquated design, which most of them, they've been able to change out around the island. And that is that that sewer comes into that manhole from the top and drops down to the solution or the containment, and is the responsibility for that odor. That's not done anymore. When this project, irregardless, gets done, that manhole will be reversed where the flow comes in, under the well and not aerated in the top. That pipe does not just serve Sea Island. In fact, the majority of the flow, and you can call Brunswick Joint Water Sewer, comes from all of the neighborhoods, from St. Williams Catholic Church north Frederica Road to that manhole. So it's not the sole air upon and privilege of Sea Island to have access. The majority of that flow comes in there. Another thing is that I'll have the honor to be sitting up here by the election of the people. And I've said from the very beginning of my campaign that this intersection was a priority. It was a problem, it was a problem for the future. And again, I want to state that whether the disagreeance out there, each traffic report that has been paid for and filed by this county has talked about signalization, but the ultimate end on the last page has been a roundabout is needed for the efficiency of traffic in that zone. And I reiterate, Commissioner Brunson's, just alone, the national standard, federal standard, the federal record, the federal insurance, everything, is that roundabouts reduce up to 11 possibilities of accidents versus a signalized intersection. So this project is tortuous. It may be sued by certain people who have filed a lot of suits against this county and cost taxpayers a lot of money. It's their privilege. And that lawsuit may come. It should come as soon as possible. I have confidence that this project will be done right. This commission has been very careful and deliberate in its process of hearing from all parties for any and all traffic reports, and information and suggestions has been turned over to the engineers. Everything has been very methodically done, and we're entering into that next phase of design. With that, I think I'm done. I know, was Commissioner Quinn still on?
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, Commissioners. You know, I think it's important to realize that, you know, this is an intersection that's failing. Mr. Bork's comment, Stephen Knight, he admitted that something needed to be done at the intersection. I think, he and I may disagree, what the solution is. And the last year, we have looked at this solution, and in my opinion, that analysis clearly shows the solution that provides the most capacity in that intersection is the roundabout. We've got a lot of people that live north of that intersection, and when there's a problem, the traffic becomes a standstill. You heard Mr. Smith talk about us as a board, we need to be concentrating on how to prepare people for hurricanes and evacuations. I know no better way than to address that for a large number of people in St. Simons than to make sure that intersection has more capacity so people can move through quickly. Now, hurricane is a one-time situation, but on a daily basis, people are backed up at all points on that intersection, trying to get through. And I just feel like that it's time for us as a commission to move forward with a solution that fixes the problem for 20-plus years. I've had people suggest to me, well, why don't you try this, and maybe add a few lanes here or there? Those are temporary solutions. In my opinion, you eventually come back to where can we find the most capacity? The most capacity that has been clearly shown is the roundabout. And so, I hope that we would go ahead and move forward on getting the design done. I'm glad that we had the peer review. I think as a commission, insisting on that is important, because we want two sets of eyes looking at what we're doing and making sure that it's done well. And so, I don't know how much more analysis and conversation we can have on it. I think we've done our due diligence. We've done it in such a way that's been public for the last year, and I think it's time for us to move forward.
Back in, one other comment, too, for the financing of this. Yes, it was on the last SPOSS, is part of a lot of projects. That SPOSS was defeated, but the funding from this project, as Tamara has recounted, our excise tax collections will reach 12 million this year. And there is a budget surplus in there, which I've talked about with our community from the time I was running for office, being elected, and since then, that is not infringing on the 30 million that we have set aside for reserves or hurricane issues. So that's why that we've chosen, or I've chosen, to vote and support for this project. Moving to the next phase, which is being funded for the design. And with that, I'm-
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the professional services agreement with Southeastern Engineering Incorporated for construction documents for Sea Island-Fredrica Road intersection improvements.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And by voice, Commissioner Tofterson?
Yes.
All right, so that passes unanimously. We have also tonight, wanted to talk about a little bit before we adjourn. It's not, it's not an agenda item, but it's the bike ride across Georgia is going to be ending its ride here in Brunswick. We have worked in agreement with them where they'll be able to use the parking lot next to Veterans Park for culmination of their bike ride across Georgia, and we embrace them and their efforts. So, is anything, Mr. Fallon?
No, nothing really to add. Commissioner O'Neil, they have already actually changed their permit request to reflect the, to reflect the discussion that we had the other night, so we should be good.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Attorney, anything for executive session? All right, with that, that completes our business for tonight. We want to thank you for being here, and we stand adjourned.